The April 7, 2025 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. The first item tonight is a presentation regarding the school department's FY26 budget. Dr. Doris?
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the Auburn School Department's proposed FY26 budget. This budget reflects the values we hold as a school community, supporting students, making responsible financial decisions, and planning thoughtfully for the future. Let's walk through where we are, what's driving this budget, and how it supports our mission to provide a high-quality education for every student. So we'll start with a snapshot of our district. The Auburn School Department serves 3,364 students across nine schools, including one high school, one middle school, six elementary schools, and one alternative education program. We educate students from pre-K through grade 12 with the support of approximately 600 staff, and this includes administrators, teachers, ed techs, support staff, transportation, food service, athletics, and central office personnel. On the right side of this slide, you can see that our students represent a wide range of needs. 52.2% of our students are economically disadvantaged, which means they qualify for free or reduced lunch. 19.5% are students with disabilities. 11.8% are multilingual learners, and 6.3% are experiencing homelessness. These numbers frame the importance of equitable resource allocation in our budget decisions. And I also want to point out a few things on this slide. One is that our total enrollment in terms of students is up 96 right now in comparison to last year. The number of students that are economically disadvantaged, that's up 194 from last year at this same time. The number of multilingual learners is up 79 from last year at this same time, and the number of students experiencing homelessness is up 94. This budget is grounded in our values and our mission, which is to deliver high-quality education while managing resources responsibly. And you can see here that we're focused on four pillars. The first is student success, and we're investing in class sizes, making sure that those are manageable for our teachers, support staff, and strategies that directly increase our graduation rates. The second pillar is equity and access, and this means that we're directing our resources to the students who need them the most, including our multilingual learners, our students with disabilities, and our economically disadvantaged students. The third pillar is operational efficiency. This year, we've eliminated unfilled positions. We have not expanded programs or services, and we're sharing city services. And the fourth pillar is long-term sustainability. We are planning for potential facility consolidation and using our fund balance conservatively right now to protect the future. These principles ensure that every dollar supports our mission. Moving on, I want to point out that this budget wasn't created in isolation. It was built in coordination with city leadership. Phil and I have met multiple times talking about what our strategies would be this year, and we've made smart, conservative decisions. There are no new programs or service expansions. We're continuing to explore shared services to reduce overhead and increase efficiencies. And we're reviewing our facilities, as I mentioned in the last slide, to determine if consolidation makes sense in the years ahead. And the focus is on sustainability and responsible use of public funds. The school committee has set clear and strategic goals that guide both our work and our budget. The first is around student achievement. We are aiming for a 95% graduation rate by 2025, and we've achieved that. Also, we want our students to meet or exceed state proficiency targets, and we want to close opportunity and achievement gaps. The second goal is around clear communication. We want to foster trust, belonging, and strong in community engagement. The third goal is around our facilities master plan, and we are working to address building capacity issues and infrastructure needs. And the last goal is around school committee self-evaluation. This ensures that we are continuously improving our governance and practices. And these goals connect directly to the investments reflected in this budget. This is a graphic of our annual budget process, keeping in mind that we're always working in three years of the budget: last year, the current year, and the upcoming year. So in October is when we begin reviewing enrollment projections and developing a draft budget. And then in January and February, we receive our anticipated state subsidy, and this is when I put together my budget for the school committee. And during the months of March and April, we hold school committee meetings and we gather community input. And then in May, the school committee and the city council hopefully approve the budget. And then in the month of June, the budget is sent out to the voters in the citywide budget validation referendum, which we refer to as the BVR. And here are the big numbers for next year. Our total proposed budget is $64,718,893. This is an increase of roughly $2.6 million, or an increase of 4.2% from the previous year. And in terms of the local share, it's $21,488,252, which is an increase of $733,514, or 3.5% from FY25. Moving along, I want to give you some updates on positions and staffing as we develop the budget this year. Our staffing strategy is focused and efficient. Every year, we look at positions that we've been unable to fill, and we determine whether or not we need to move those forward into the next year's budget. So this year, we've eliminated two unfilled positions. One is a guidance counselor at AMS, and the other is a Spanish teacher at AMS. We also took a position that was in special education, and we reclassified that to support multilingual learners at the high school. And we also are going to fund two class-size reduction positions through grants. On the right side of this slide, you can see historical position reductions. Over the last two years, we've cut 36.5 positions. This next slide shows what's driving this year's budget increase. There are three main areas here. We have health insurance. Costs have increased 16.6% or around $1.1 million. Special education is up 9.6% or $1.34 million. And then we have our contractual salary increases, where we're looking at a 4.6 increase or These are essential costs that are needed to sustain services and maintain a competitive And on the revenue side, here's how we're funding the budget. So first, we have the state subsidy, and this year, we're receiving $32,46,130. This is a $2.8 million increase, 9.6% over last year. And then from the city of Auburn, we're asking for $21,488,252, which is an increase of $733,000 over last year, and that's a 3.5% increase. Our debt service aid for Park Avenue in EL, we're receiving $8.83 million right now from the state, and this is down a little bit from last year, down 208,000. And then we are planning on using $1.75 million from the fund balance, and this is a decrease from last year of $600,000. Okay, I'm going to move on to the cost center pie. So this pie chart shows how our proposed budget is distributed across the cost centers. We have cost centers that represent the different areas of the school department. And as you can see in this pie chart, instruction makes up the largest portion of the budget, which reflects our core mission of teaching and learning. And then number two is special education, and that's the second cost center, but it's also the second most costly cost center. And then the next biggest piece of the pie is debt service, and so on and so forth. So these are the different cost centers. And when we get to the end of the presentation, if you have specific questions, I can answer them, then this shows you just the overall picture of where we're spending our money. And I'm going to move on to the next slide. When we talk about fiscal responsibility, Auburn continues to stand out. And I have some data here from FY24. And as you can see on the left, we have per pupil cost. And in FY24, our per pupil expenditures excluding debt service amounted to $15,011 per student. The statewide average is $18,839, and this ranks Auburn 199th out of 251 districts, which puts us at the bottom 25% for per pupil spending. And on the right-hand side of this slide, you see the percentage that we are over EPS. So EPS stands for Essential Programs and Services. It's basically the state's formula for how to fund school districts, and it really provides a baseline level of funding. And so most school districts have to contribute money above that baseline, above what you're required to provide. And so in FY24, Auburn was 6% over EPS, and that amounted to $3.2 million. The statewide average was 26.4% over EPS. And so when we look where did Auburn rank, we were number 206 out of 226 districts, and that put us in the bottom 10% for spending over EPS. So we're achieving outstanding results while remaining one of the most fiscally conservative school systems in the state of Maine. So if we go to this slide here, you can see our return on investment, and these results speak for themselves. Last year, our high school graduation rate was 95%. This ranks Auburn among the top 15 high schools in the entire state of Maine, and it ranks us as the top high school in our region. With the new high school, we have expanded career and technical education programs, and we also are able to offer students dual enrollment college courses for credit. Another bright spot is the Donald M. Gay Performing Arts Center. This is not only a student asset, it's become a regional hub for statewide events. And then our success is built upon the dedication of our world-class teachers and staff who are truly committed to our students. So this is a very strong return on investment for our community. And as I've shared tonight, our budget reflects our strategic goals, prioritizes students, and upholds fiscal responsibility. We appreciate your partnership as we continue building an excellent future for Auburn's children. This concludes my presentation, but we welcome the opportunity to answer any questions that you might have. And next to me is Scott Aneer, our Assistant Superintendent. And next to Scott, I'm right back. Amanda, come right up, please, is Amanda Kuchar. She is our business manager.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the council? Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you talk about getting a couple positions filled with grants, how long is the grant good for? In other words, how long will these two positions be filled? When will you have to pick up the cost for this, and how expensive will it be when you pick it up?
That's a great question. Instead of adding these positions to the budget this year, we decided to look at grant funding because we think that the need for these positions will be short-term. We're hoping that with our efforts for consolidation and maybe the potential of closing one of our elementary schools, that we won't need these two additional positions in future years.
So how long is this grant for that you'll be using them?
We're going to go year to year right now. So we'll have these two positions for this coming school year. And these positions are also attached to Park Avenue Elementary School. And currently, all of our multilingual learners attend Park Avenue Elementary School, and we have a plan next year to move some of those students to New Auburn. And so we're going to begin an elementary school program over in New Auburn. So as we make those shifts, we will likely not need those additional class-size reduction positions at Park Avenue.
In order to...I'm going to really get after you, sorry. In order to get this grant, what were some of the hoops you had to go through in order to get this? What did you have to promise to do?
This is...this grant is part of our title grants, and we receive those annually every year. So it's an amount of money that we decide how we're going to use based on the needs in the district. Right now, we're feeling pretty good about the next 18 to 24 months in terms of our funding, and this money is federal funds that comes to the state and then comes to the district.
Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council Wyson?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I just made a couple notes. In regards to when you were talking about the revenue overview, you're looking to use 1.75 of your fund balance. What is the total of your fund balance?
I'm going to turn to Ms. Kuchar and have her speak to that.
Currently, our fund balance is right around $5 million. And in order to project out the next few years and make sure our revenue doesn't completely shift to the tax base, we did a calculation that allowed us to use that up over a few years.
Thank you. Another question is, when you talk about under the cost centers, you talk about regular instruction. Can you give me an example of what would be other instruction of what that might be?
I'll just get to that. Oh, yeah. Cost center four is athletics primarily and stipend positions.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Council Wyson?
Just like to note that the 95% graduation rate is particularly impressive in light of the high number of unhoused kids. That means quite a percentage of kids that are graduating are homeless, which is amazing to me, but I compliment you for that. Question about languages. I saw that thing about the Spanish position at AMS, which just sort of raised the issue for me, is what are we offering for language, foreign language instruction?
Mr. Aneer can speak to that at the high school.
Sure. At the high school level, we offer French and Spanish, and we had to dissolve the Latin program a year and a half ago. There was no teacher. We've been able to backfill that with another teacher who is filling in, not filling in, but has the position and is expanding the opportunities around Spanish. We haven't been able to hire any Spanish teachers at the middle school, so that's what brought that forward. That was one of those vacant positions that's been there for quite some time.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Council Pla?
I just wanted to commend the school department for putting this budget together. Obviously, well, first of all, they do it every year, so congratulations. But more importantly, as we know, every department has a tight budget this year. I just wanted to speak to the council that as you look through this, and I think the things to look at as we decide where we're going to be asking monies to be cut is, I think it's important to look at the number of positions that have been cut from the school department over the last two years. Now, you know, there's an asterisk on some of those. They were ESAR-funded positions that, at the expiration of those funds, they were responsibly tied up and either ended or moved into the budget wherever they needed to be. But that is something that, you know, we're asking all these entities, education, municipal, whether it's ESAR or ARPA, we're saying be responsible with these funds. And the school department has done that with the reduction of all these positions. I think, you know, I went through last year's and this year's school-by-school budget and looked at some of the funding requests even just for supplies. And there are individual principals who are already asking for less in supplies than they did last year with really no reduction in class size. So just things to take a look at. I'm not trying to influence anyone one way or another, but I think it's important to weigh all of the...weigh the context as we go through all of these departments. What have they done previously? Where do they stand today, and what can they handle moving forward? So my hat's off to the school department, and I look forward to discussing this with the council.
Council Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your fund balance, would you tell me if you moved any money forward this year, or is the $5 million you say is left is not counted in that, or will there be more to add to it?
We haven't completed the FY24 audit to know what the additional funds are from FY24. So this is as of FY23 audit completion, and the projected amount for FY24, it's not official at this time.
Thank you for that. I would guess that you'll be somewhere near what you moved forward last year or very close to that.
With the expiration of ESAR funds, I expect it to be a bit less than that.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, could you tell me our fund balance that we carry is somewhere between 12 and 14? Does that help the school department in any way if they fell short within the city?
Yeah, the fund balance is there for all allocations that the city must be required to cover as we move forward. I think, Kelsey, you probably can tell us where we are for an amount here in a minute, but that's exactly right. We also, when we talk about fund balance, you'll see FY23, and because the audit is not complete for the city side as well. So we're still waiting to hear back from the auditors on where we'll be on that number. You know, I think it goes to the same thing that we do for LA 911 has their own policy when it comes to fund balance, and the council worked on that policy to ensure that there was funding that was allocated with those separate entities, Airport, 911. So we try not to overlap that, so that's why our percentage, as we've worked on what the percentage should be for the city, trying to take into account that the school has their allocation, 911 has their allocation, Airport has theirs, so that we're not really banking a lot of fund balance that's not needed.
Okay, back to the school department. Can you tell me what the max fund balance is that you should be carrying?
So with the updated laws, it's a 5%, which is a little over $3 million. Now, the way that works is as long as you have a plan for any additional funds, then it's not considered part of that balance. For instance, currently in FY25, we allocated $2.35 million for revenue for our budget. That is not considered part of the fund balance at this time. It's part of our revenue for this year. If we don't spend it all, then it reinserts itself into the fund balance as part of that 5% that we are allowed to keep.
Thank you for that. One more question. How many people are we holding in position that we haven't got to fill in positions?
Are you asking how many vacancies we have right now that we haven't been able to fill?
Yeah.
Just the two...just the two positions, the Spanish teacher and the guidance counselor at the middle school, and those are the two positions that we're eliminating this year.
Thank you.
Council Milk?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Two of your drivers in your budget was your health insurance is up 1.1, 16%, and special education is up 9.6, almost 10%, $1.34 million. Those are massive pieces of the budget. And if I understand correctly, you have around special ed, especially there's legislative and there's requirements. Do you have a strategy? Do you have a plan to address some of those? Some of those, especially, I mean, it's two drastically different issues, but one, my first question would be on the health insurance side. Is that...does the school department full pay health insurance for the staff?
We do not full pay.
Okay.
It's a percentage.
Okay, so, and I must assume you guys have talked about changing that as needed, and has that...did that change this year?
The percentages are in the contractual bargaining agreements, so we're tied to those.
Gotcha, okay. And then, do you have a...is there a strategy or a plan to shop? And have you done that? And did you exhaust what you think? Or is that part of your collective bargaining and required coverages, that sort of thing?
Ms. Kuchar, do you want to answer that one?
We have not shopped around for health insurance. The general health insurance of Anthem is what we use. That's what the majority of our school departments in the state use. I can definitely do some shopping around, but I think what you're going to find is the plans that we offer, if they become less available to our staff or less helpful to our staff, we end up losing staff. We do not offer full amounts for health insurance. The staff does, on average, cover 15 to 20% of the costs. So they're actually seeing the same increases that we're seeing as well in the percent increase there. We are looking at possibilities of different dental and vision insurance, but health insurance, there are very few to look through.
And then special ed, is there, you know, is there anything we can do? And is there...I know that we've, in the past, we've create, you know, we've outsourced and then insourced, and I'm sure we're trying to exhaust all possible scenarios, but just curious to get your feedback on that. I'm not saying that we don't have to do it. I'm just curious what your thoughts and strategies are for going forward to sort of... sort of look at that.
Well, this is Laura Shaw. She's our Director of Student Services, and she can speak to the questions that you have.
Oh, I don't have to. Okay, sorry. I'm excited to get to press a button. But I'm very mindful that this is a huge cost center in, in the budget, and this increase is a large increase. The, primarily, the reasons for the increase are fixed costs that we cannot control, and those are in tuition payments for students who are in special purpose private schools and for seed. So seed is a complicated cost, but essentially, it's the cost, it's the cost that we have to cover for students' related services in OT, PT, speech, BHP services for when they are in those special purpose private schools. So Main Care pays 60, 68%. We have to pay 32%. And those costs per billable unit have skyrocketed. Two years ago, there was a 44% increase in seed costs. So that's primarily where that increase comes from. With that said, this year, I have really tried to mitigate the costs or at least capture as much reimbursement and revenue as I can through our own endeavors. So we also seek reimbursement through Main Care for our OT, speech, PT providers. And just those alone, it's over $100,000. We're getting reimbursed for the CDS services that we provide for four-year-olds. I found out earlier in the year that we could receive 100% reimbursement for students who are in these, for transportation services for students in special purpose private schools. So it's taken almost all year to set that up, but we are hoping to get revenue that way. So I was actually, right before this meeting, on a call with Zoom with other, a couple other directors who are really maximizing revenue in Main Care. Lewiston's one of them, and I was on a call with Farmington, and they are recouping $1 million. Unfortunately, you have to spend money to make money, so, you know, there is hiring of staff and coordinators and clinicians and things like that. But definitely very mindful that special ed is an expensive cost center and always increasing, so always looking for ways to really capture the, the revenue that these special purpose private schools do, but in our public schools.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and to you and the, the school committee for the hard work in putting a, a budget together. I just commend the staff on such great outcomes, particularly given the, the, the only being 6% over the essential programs and services. It's pretty great. I, I, I just wanted to follow up to make sure that I'm understanding the, some of Counsel Walker's questions on the debt service. You mentioned currently for fiscal year '23, it was about $5 million, but then you're, from that, $5 million is a portion that was in the budget that's kind of being spent down? Or is that separate from that?
Are we talking about fund balance?
Yes.
So yes, the fund balance of $5 million is not including the 2.35 million we budgeted for FY '25. That's considered spent because it's in our budget for our revenue. We can expend up to what our budget is. The $5 million was audited for FY '23, so we still have an estimation of what FY '24 fund balance gave us. And it was less than FY '23, the, the carryover from FY '23, just because we had fewer grants that we were using. So the $5 million is an approximation. I, I expect it'll be pretty close to that. I don't think we're far off. And yes, the, the plan is to continue to use the fund balance in our revenue, but to go a little lower than what we've been using because we shouldn't be seeing those carryovers like we have.
Thank you. And then just a quick question related to the high school graduation rate. We're in the top 15. How many high schools in the state?
Yeah, around 250, 260.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Counsel Milk.
And following up, I, my, switching subjects, you had talked about, last year, I asked you to evaluate buildings, and we've made investments into new buildings. And is there, my last, my last choice is to, is to reduce people. If we can reduce buildings and move people, that's optimal to reduce costs. So could you talk a little bit about, maybe just elaborate a little on what your strategy is, if, if you can?
I'm going to have Mr. Neer speak to the work that we're doing with our facilities. He's leading that charge right now, and he's prepared to share a little bit with you.
Thanks for the question.
Thank you. Yes, well, good.
So just a little background of where we are and how we are right now. So la, February of '24, we got our master facilities plan back from Harriman, and it provided scenarios on improvement and consolidation. From that, the school committee developed an advisory committee to create the, to, to be created and investigate the findings of the master plan. So that work began late winter, early spring, continued through the summer, and at the conclusion of that presented its findings back to the school committee. And part of the recommendations that came from there was the inclusion of the 6th grade to the Auburn Middle School. That wasn't the end of the work. That was just phase one of the work. Since then, the school committee has voted to support that inclusion plan. We've gone out for our architect and engineer of record to be interviewed. Interviews have been completed. We're now at the forefront of, we're right there to name that, that entity. And they will come on board for us to start to take apart the master facility plan to see what scenarios and what consolidation could look like and should look like on a variety of factors, financial, capital improvement, enrollment, where that looks and where that takes place. The next piece for the facility advisory committee, the facility subcommittee is to bring back an advisory committee to talk about what is the most meaningful way to move forward with the 6th grade inclusion. And then to continue that work with the architect and engineer of record of really looking at what of all of those pieces look like. And again, it's another example of some of the partnership that the school department has with the city, been working with or following along with the planning department, working on their housing study to really understand where some of housing and population is growing in the city, where it's contracting, so that we can have a meaningful set of data to bring back to inform what's happening with the master facility plan and working with the architect and engineer of record to really look at that so that we are making the most responsible decision fiscally and programmatically and what works best for the city and not just one part of those considerations.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That sounds like what I was asking for last year, and I appreciate that. So, and then I just want to, one note for Counselor Walker, and we talked about the fund balance. 62 million times 5% is 3.1. So, you know, I think there is some room in there for, if, if we're going to take a look at the budget. That's, I'd just throw that out there.
Counsel Walker.
Thank you. Last question from me. Could you tell me what the sizes are of the classrooms? Meaning, how many kids, we'll, we'll say from the first grade to the sixth and then the middle school and then the high school, what are the sizes of that class?
The class sizes range, I would say on average, you would see about 20 students in each classroom. But there'll be a range. We like to see lower class sizes in K through second grade, and then beyond that, you're going to see probably 20, a little bit above 20 maybe, all the way up through middle school. High school, we have, it's, it varies. Do you have that in front of you, Mr. Neer?
I, I do, actually. The, the projected class average size for the middle school this year is 1 to 20, and next year is 1 to 21. And then we kind of have it broken out at the high school level by department so that it gives you a snapshot of not just class sizes, it's an average of an average. So you take all the English teachers, take their average, average them together. But then it also calculates their student load, how many students do they see over that? And then we also can pull those to what is the overall average of all of those averages from class sizes. So it varies from 15.2 in English, which is where we're trying to make sure that we have our smallest class sizes in terms of your core areas because of working on the, the pieces that we set in terms of curriculum and making sure that we're proficient in the reading and the writing. And then it moves its way up to about 18.4, but it also has the larger student load in social studies. Again, math is at 16.3, so we try to keep that as we're working on the math proficiency. The areas with the largest capacity, a largest capacity, largest loads are in health and in phys ed, the larger classroom spaces, utilizing the fitness room, the two gyms, the track, the outdoor area. So before, when we were in the old building, we had less resources, became a safety issue. Now we can spread them out a little bit. And over time, we've been able to reduce that department staff-wise. So that, that is a factor there. So historically, we've ran right around the 16 to 18 class sizes. But again, those are averages of averages, so you could see a class of 26, and then you could have a class of 16, because we have a lot of those singletons, whether it's an AP or the Level 4 Spanish class. There's fewer enrolled in there, but there are singleton. Same with some of your music classes, they're singletons. But, so that's how it kind of influences the average of the average. I hope that answers the question for you.
Thank you.
I, I would just point out, especially for the public, that if you look at the agenda for tonight's meeting online, the school department has provided some links. And all of this data that the Assistant Superintendent was just referencing is all broken out in there in much more detail if people want to follow up on that. Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Follow up on the good counsel Milk's questions about buildings and different things. I, when you get back the study of where you think you can consolidate school buildings and stuff, are you going to devise a plan to maybe put them on mothballs with minimal services so that if they're not used, the water pipes and stuff won't break or any other catastrophes?
Oh, absolutely. There's, there's no bigger safety risk in any community than a vacant building. I think you folks know that, and it is for the school department. We ran through that scenario when we were trying to figure out the funding around the new high school, what would happen if you had a vacant high school sitting behind a, a brand new one. So absolutely, we'd be working with our maintenance department, the city staff of how do we manage that? And what are the next steps for that? And those are processes that vary from community to community of what's going to happen with that property, as well as how do you take care of that property in that decision-making phase? So that very much would be part of the conversation of what are we doing with the buildings if we reach that place?
And then you'll come up with a plan that you don't just let them go quickly. In other words, I know there might come a time when you want to get it off your, the city's tax, or put it back on the city's tax rolls. So will you come up with a plan of how long you may want to keep the building?
I, I believe there's some statutory language about how long we can hold it and what that process is in our partnership with the city. There, there is some language. We can't just have it sitting around vacant forever and ever and ever. There, there is a process between the school department and the city of the transfer of those buildings.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Just one, in addition, the, the Performing Arts Center. It's great to hear. It's a regional hub, as we all kind of anticipated and were envisioning. Is that something you anticipate would be a revenue generator for the school? How does, how does that work?
Definitely think that's a possibility down the road. And Mr. Neer has some statistics around the usage that I think you would be interested in hearing.
Sure. So, so far, we've hosted 38 events there since it's been open. Over 9,000 total audience last year. This year, we're over 24. Total since it's been open has been over 12,000. And so we have set up a special revenue fund for some of those pieces to go in to maintain the facilities so that the costs for repairs, cleanings, those things, hopefully no changes in technology, but that some of that money is going in there to maintain over the period of time so that what we have learned from exploring with other places that have opened auditoriums or performing arts centers is that you got to do the ongoing maintenance, as well as have something set aside for those unexpected costs. So that fund has been set up. And then anything beyond that is, is intended to be a revenue generator for, for the, for the school and the, the community as that offset.
Great. Thank you.
Counsel Milk.
Well, thanks for, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Tim, for, that was, one of the things that I've heard, it is a challenge for attracting more events into the, is alcohol and whether or not we can provide alcohol for events, whether it even be, you know, is that something that you plan to take a look at? And is that something that the city council and that we can help? And is there statutory challenges to that? Is there, that's my question. Yeah.
Yeah. So far, that hasn't been an impediment, and we very much have heard that as, as a challenge. But it's really how you're marketing and who you're looking at for, to bring in certain events. It would definitely have to be a much larger conversation around the rules that govern school property, and that would have to be locally and statutorily.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I have a few follow-up questions. Most of these items, one of the councils addressed. But to follow up on the health insurance, just to make sure I understood your point, the health insurance that we're using is in effect in a pool with other similarly situated educational institutions, right? So I want to make sure I understood that because one of the challenges is if you shop around is you're on your own and you don't have the benefit of the pool.
Or it's a smaller pool and it affects you a lot more. Yes, there's less.
And is my understanding correct that the cost drivers this year on health insurance are not just the cost of the health insurance, but its higher adoption rate, meaning that we extend certain benefits to all of the employees, and they may or may not, based on their individual circumstances, opt into that? And one of the drivers this year is we've had more employees opt into the plan. Is that right?
Definitely. At the school department, we've had a lot more. Yes.
I also wanted to follow up a bit on special education cost. I'm not sure if I have this correct, but my understanding is that the legislature made a change relative to day rates where in effect, I mean, I understand why they did it. In effect, providers were getting paid for the days that students were there. And of course, it's a very challenged population, and sometimes they don't go there. And that made these third-party services hard to provide, and that there's been a legislative change that we have to pay the day rate for the student for all days, whether they're there or not, correct? Yeah, okay. I just, I thought that was a correct understanding, that something that's driving, it's not just that special ed costs are coming up, it's that the, the construct of how we engage third-party services has changed recently. On the fund balance, so I heard you say that you're allowed to keep 5%. So could you clarify this for me on the, I'm not sure exactly how this works. On the city side, by charter, we have a, you know, a low threshold, a high threshold, and it requires action by the council if it, if the fund balance dips below 10% or above 14. How does that work on the school side? The 5% is this, is this a school policy? Is this statutory? And is there a range or just a single number?
This is driven by the Department of Education. So it was around 9% is what they allowed for quite a few years during the COVID years, as our fund balances were growing across the straight, the state. And so just, just recently, it's gone back to the 5%. And that really is. is a maximum of five percent of unallocated funds.
Right. So I'm assuming that if they only have a max, that's tied to the way they calculate the general purpose aid to education, because otherwise, a school could have a very, very large fund balance. So they want to make sure you're expending your, the revenue that you have, as opposed to just banking it.
I think it has a lot to do with, we should be budgeting, you know, closely in line with what we expect to spend. And that would definitely, the five percent limits school departments from over-budgeting. Yes.
And I noticed in the online slides, it seemed to indicate that there's a plan in place to work this down over time, as opposed to just, say, going right to five percent now, because potentially, you could cause a cliff the next year where you have, first minute out the door in your next budget, you've got to make that up. So it went down from last year to this year, and is that the plan to work this down to the five percent?
So in FY twenty-five, the fund balance used for revenue is actually higher than FY twenty-four. But in FY twenty-six, we're looking for a $600,000 decrease. The formula basically calculates a fairly steady decrease over the four years. We always want to try to keep as much in our fund balance as we can. We're not looking to shoot for three-point-two percent, which is that five percent of our sixty-four million that we're requesting. But we don't want to get below one million either, because should we have some circumstances happen, and we don't have a bond available for something in our facilities or such, we would need to use that fund balance to cover the costs. So really, it would be fiscally responsible for us to be aiming for that three million dollars and to replenish it or not, not use it on an annual basis. But we do need to be able to use some of it in our revenue plan to keep the tax base down.
Right. So the current plan is, if I hear this correctly, after the twenty-four audit comes in, is to see what the revised fund balance is, and then continue the work to spend this down to the five percent?
Correct.
Okay. So regarding the facilities, I appreciate the update. Are there any estimated timeframes to this? When, because this is, if I heard this correctly, this is going to be sequential, right? You can't just in one fell swoop get from here, where you are today, to where you want to go. And the first step of this is moving the sixth graders all into the middle school, and then evaluating where you are, and potentially what the impact is on the elementary school enrollments or consolidation. Is there any broad estimate at this point about the number of years it might take to work through that process?
So you're correct on the sixth grade inclusion is the first step. In our preliminary discussions and plans, we're not going to wait for the sixth grade inclusion to actually come to fruition before we start having the conversation of what does everything else look like? That just doesn't feel like the right thing to do. So, yes, the first step is that. But as I said, we have the advisory committee on the sixth grade inclusion. Soon to follow, which would probably happen in the next four to five months, is to start the advisory committee of what does the next step entail. And so that's where we really need to look at. What are all the possible scenarios there? Is it to continue to do a K, pre-K program through fifth grade? Is it to talk about pre-K through third, and then, or three, four, five, and a pre-K to two? What does that look like? So we really need to start that investigating what those scenarios are, but not to wait until sixth grade is at the middle school. And so right now, we're kind of projecting that it would be the fall-
Fall of twenty-twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, that sixth grade would be there. That doesn't mean that that's when the work would start on the other buildings. Like, that work needs to happen parallel, but with sixth grade in front a little bit.
Right. Thank you very much. And a couple other questions. Of the thirty-eight events at the gay center, how many of these were not school-related? In other words, were community-type events?
I would, I don't want to guess. I think when I asked for the numbers, the thirty-eight events, it was probably a fifty-fifty split at that point in time. And those, meaning it has increased, so not just Edward Little, or the middle school, or the all-city, but bringing in outside school groups, the district twos and those pieces, jazz festivals, that kind of stuff. So they're not necessarily Auburn school ones, but they're school-based ones. So it's about fifty, but I can get that number.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with that. If I hear what you're saying, it's fifty-fifty split between direct Auburn School Department and broader school engagements that's using that. I think that, you know, there's a community expectation that the facility begins to be used beyond school or school-related events. And, you know, part of that may have to do, as Council Milks has pointed out, a challenge there. But I think as we're getting ramped up and used to using that facility, it's going to be important to see what engagement we can get of community events that aren't school-related there.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. There, a couple months ago, Lily, who's the, what's her title?
Events coordinator.
Events coordinator, who was brought in initially, actually, I think she splits her position between that and some grant oversight. But she gave a really nice presentation a few months ago with a breakdown of a lot, anecdotally, of a lot of what those non-school events were. I'm sure it's available somewhere on our website. I'm sure Scott's looking at it right now.
Very much is.
Yeah, but it's a great background in some of the questions you guys are asking.
Well, Scott, while you're, Mr. Aneer, while you're looking at that, if we could put on to our agenda some point, if we can, ahead of time, if there's a way that we can help the school, either approving, changing an ordinance as necessary to allow for alcohol to be served, or whether there needs to be insurance, some sort of, you know, temporary, like we do for the events and whatnot, for the school that they could turn on and turn off for specific events. Just if we could put that on.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that. And I think it's just something to think about, right? Because we get constant questions about the expansion of the use for non-school-related events. And then, and the last thing you didn't mention, but I wanted to ask about, last year, there was some discussion about new efforts to try to work on attendance issues. If you might comment on the work that you've been able to do on attendance?
Well, each school has an attendance team, and those individuals track the attendance of all the students in the school. And they work with the families and support the families to break down the barriers that exist to get our kids to school. So I don't have the numbers in front of me. I think we're making progress. Mr. Aneer, do you want to comment on the high school process?
Yeah, it's a lot of labor behind everyone's part, and it really, you see the fruits of that labor and the graduation rate. Like, there's a saying that's been, if we can get them through the door, we can get them through the graduation. And so that is a huge push on that. And that is, it's not one person, it's not two people, it's like ten people who are behind that. And one of the key pieces that manifests itself is communication, communication, communication. So we send out a monthly progress report of what their grade is at that moment in time, what their attendance is at that moment in time. And attendance is every type of absence, whether it is excused or unexcused, just calculates that, as well as tardies. And so at the elementary, when you have some of the smaller numbers, it's the secretary and the teacher who are doing a ton of communicating, putting that work out there on every platform, whether it's a phone call, an email, secretary, the principal, the guidance counselor, it's outreach, 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 constant.
Yeah. So it's fair to say that the increased focus on this has reduced absences, and that, if I'm hearing this correctly, that especially at the high school, that that has a substantial impact on the improved graduation rate.
Yes.
Council Milk?
There's one other item that, thank you, you talking about attendance, it triggered, because I heard, the homeless youth, you had mentioned, has drastically spiked up to two-hundred-and-eleven, I think was the number, or something along those lines.
Yes.
I'm going to throw this question out. What can we do to address that, to help? And, you know, what sort of resources, that's, to me, that's something that has to be addressed? And what we, what can we do?
That's a great question. We have a McKinney-Vento liaison, Sasha Anastasov, who you may all know. She was part of the committee. And I think all the things that everyone is doing is helping. The community as a whole needs to be able to support these folks that are really struggling. So I can't give you a specific, you know, here's what you could do to help us. But I just think that as a community, we all need to work together and do whatever we can.
Open our houses.
Provide these supports.
Open our families. And so I think the more awareness of that, I don't think most people realize that, you know, seven percent of our school population, or something like that, I think if I'm doing my high school math, six or seven percent. So let's keep talking about that, and maybe, maybe people with big hearts can offer that have an extra room, and a kid's gone off, and maybe we can do some stuff like that. If we can make that awareness, I don't know, you know.
Council Cal.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Council Milks. It's the other piece for us to be thinking about, and both for how we might handle this, but also for educating our public, is the increase over time. I mean, we went from fifty, less, around sixty, fifty-five years ago, up to well over two-hundred. And Sasha's prediction was that it could continue to go and go up. So that's one thing. The other piece, I love the idea of a network. It gets the community involved for those children or students that are at the right age. The other piece is that we're seeing a growing number of families who are with children. And so the support of that might be slightly different, but that's just an awareness for people to be. It's not just the high school students who just can't live at home anymore, and it would be one person in a house. It could be, you know, three. It could be a single parent with children. The other, and finally, another piece to, for us to be thinking about, and how we can creatively work on this, whether it's in the budget, or whether we get money pulled together from the community at large. Sasha did point out that there was a pilot with funding for the McKinney-Vento liaisons, where they were given pools of dollars with many fewer restrictions on how those dollars could be spent. And she, she and her colleague, you know, they were learning from each other. They were able to do things like pay past rents and current rents, so that you avoid having someone be evicted, because it's a whole lot less costly for that. And they had money. They were showing the savings than if you had to pay a down payment and then a month's rent for a new place. So there may be some ways there, too, in terms of thinking about how we can creatively fund more effective, cost-effective, and certainly effective for the less disruption in the families. So.
I'm very interested in if there's ways that we can strategically look at that kind of thing. I'm interested in being involved in that.
Great.
Okay?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Any other, Council Wyser?
Thank you. A question may come out of this, but it's more of a, kind of a statement or some thoughts. I know some students are going, or there may be, I wonder if there's a program, I'm, I'm, I'm probably sure there is, with the college, so that while they're attending high school, they can attend to go get some college education, or they can get some trades, knowledge within the trade schools. Obviously, we, my kind of other thought would be, or from this, is kind of working, I know our airport, our airport is starting to have an uptick within general aviation, and maybe with the flight school, I hear, is booming over there with lots of students and participation. So maybe something of a link between the high school and trying to do, work with the airport or the aviation school, and see, can the, can the students go while they're attending school to maybe do ground school, or work with the aviation community over there, to really get the kids a leg up on trying for those that want to go into the aviation community, and really help them by the time they graduate, they have some sort of education, and that's less cost for them later on with trying to enter college, or that some sort of thing, however they want to do.
That's a great idea. And Mr. Aneer, do you want to speak a little bit to what we are able to offer at the high school?
So the first piece is, we've had lots of conversation back and forth in terms of students having access out there, what those careers could be, trying to do some career exploration. It has just been conversation up to this point of how to do that, and what the logistics would be, and the oversight, and the curriculum, and just, because there's some different things that you can do around apprenticeship versus a class. And so some of that is still stuff that needs to kind of be worked out, but it has very much been part of the conversation. To come back to the dual enrollment piece, students can do College for Me, which allows them to do a college class through any of the university systems. Plus, we also offer about thirteen different dual enrollment courses that are offered onsite at Edward Little, where they get Edward Little credit and college credit all at the same time. So we're always looking to expand what those opportunities are, especially locally with Central Maine Community College. Our assistant director at the high school from LRTC, Matt West, is really pushing pretty feverishly on extended learning opportunities, ELOs. Those are starting to gain some momentum in the state. And so they really kind of get into some of what that apprenticeship pieces are. So there's some pilot programs out there, and he's still kind of weighing out, where do we get in there? He's very excited about it, but it's kind of like, how do we get our toe in the water to make sure that happens? With any of those programs, they really align around two distinct areas, the department labor numbers, is there a labor need for it, and is there student interest? Because you don't want to create a program that doesn't really have the labor market behind it. You don't want to create a program that students aren't interested in. So those follow similarly with the ELO, and as well as what can we do with the other opportunities that we have locally?
Awesome. Thank you very much for that information. If there's anything with the aviation side, I'm glad to hear there's some talk about it. But any, I'd be willing to help assist any way I can with you guys. So it's a hobby, a passion of mine, a hobby. So, and I definitely hear from the aviation community, there's definitely a need for careers in that aspect, and hearing from those at the airport, so that want to get more of those involved. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I really appreciate, Dr. Doris, you and your staff putting the budget together, and all the hard work with the school committee, and I look forward to working with you as we go through the budget process. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you tonight.
Thank you. Very good.
And we'll move on to the city manager with a presentation of the manager's FY twenty-six budget.
Thank you, Mayor. So Council, Kelsey handed out to you prior to the meeting, the updated sheets. And I just want to make sure, as we continue to provide you documents, that you're just noting the header on these sheets, so that you can keep track of what packet you're looking at. So if you recall, we handed out a packet at the last workshop, and that was a packet that included some of your supplementals that you had included in there. What I need to provide to you tonight, based on charter, is the final city manager proposed budget. That's what this budget, this packet will be for you. So that'll be one that you'll have. We'll continue working through the document that you received at the last, the last workshop, because that's the document, that's your working document. That's the one that has the council column, and we'll continue making adjustments to that council column. This will be the one that you will have, that, this is the fixed budget. So by charter, if we can't get to an agreement on the budget, this will be the one that goes into effect July first.
And just to clarify for the council, in the upper right-hand corner of the one that's our working budget- And just to clarify for the council, in the upper right-hand corner of the one that's our working budget, it says Council Adjusted 324 Proposed, up in the right-hand corner. And the one that the manager's referencing tonight, which is the final manager's submission, says Proposed 317 Adjusted 47 Adopted.
Yeah, there's no adopted number, date on that, because it's currently not adopted. It's just that's, we'll put a date in once it is. That's right. So, that adjusted is the one that we're going to review tonight.
Your adjusted budget, the one that we're looking at?
Correct.
Okay, so you're going to explain how the operating change went down?
Yeah. So, when you look at that budget, there's only, I'm going to keep it really simple for you, because we're running short on time. The only change you see in there is what we discussed at the last meeting, when we discussed the recreation programs. So, we talked about taking rec, which has historically been special revenue accounts, that registration money came in, expenses went out, in those line items. And so, what you see now in this budget is you'll see just under $350,000 in expenses, and you see the exact same dollar amount in revenue. So, that's the change that you see in this document compared to what the original city manager proposed budget was.
Just to clarify, so, the proposed services and the costs related to those, and what you're presenting tonight is the same as the prior budget that you submitted. The only difference is pulling in what amounts to basically a net zero changed by bringing those special revenue accounts onto the budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, the, yeah, the only other points I'd like to make. Oh, yeah, yeah, let's go back. Council Walker asked a question regarding fund balance, so Kelsey has that.
Correct. So, the FY '23 audited fund balance was around 14 million, which was 13.01%. FY '24, which is unaudited, is around 16.7 million, which is about 14.7%. So, we do expect we'll have some that we need to spend down, although we're not in, we don't have a set balance for that as of yet. And then FY '25, we're sitting at about 14.28%, but keep in mind, we're only nine periods through our 12-period year.
Yeah, and just to remind the council of the charter provisions, when we go over the 14%, the charter then says that the council has to act to bring that under 14%, but that's within 24 months. So, given the current volatility that there is around the state budget to some extent, but more importantly, the federal budget, I think it would be prudent that we should not be thinking that we have to immediately take some action to bring this down under the 14%. There's a sufficient period of time in which to think that through, and after, we get a better idea on what the adopted state budget, which is very likely not to be till June, and then what the federal budget is for the next fiscal year, which in the best-case scenario is not likely to be till September.
Yeah, the mayor makes a great point here. So, the, there's a lot of things happening, obviously at the federal level that we're watching and monitoring, but now, some changes within the state budget as the potential voter referendum. If that gets traction, and we see that, then that means that there'll be a vote that will take place in November on whether or not to adopt the budget that the governor signed, which was just recently signed. So, if that moves forward, and we'll know, we'll know whether or not there's enough signatures in June, and then we'll know what will take place in November. But for the city of Auburn, just so you know, the financial impact on us, that means we're tracking probably around $21 million of lost revenue until a budget is actually adopted. If this was, if you were to play this all the way out, I'm hoping level heads are going to prevail here, and we're not going to see some of these drastic issues that could potentially come up, but that's what we're looking at. So, when the mayor says, you better hold on to your fund balance, that's what we're talking about. That fund balance is really in jeopardy if we need to start taking into account these months where we do not receive state revenue share, and we do not receive state school aid. So, and then, on top of that is the county jail budget, which if the county has to take action, that comes back to the municipalities, right? So, if they're not receiving their county jail funds, then that comes back to each municipality and county. We'll have to, how do we keep that jail running, and what does that look like? So, that's like doomsday review for you, you know? That's if, if all these things were to play out, this is what we're looking at.
And just to be clear, those of you that have been following the legislative process have probably seen this, but the Attorney General's office has issued an opinion that clarifies that if the referendum were to pass in November, the state government shuts down. There's no constitutional provision in the main constitution for a continuing resolution, nor is there any provision like there is in the city charter to carry forward the prior-year budget, right? So, you know, as an example, in the city, if the council could not come to any agreement on the budget, come July 1st, this, what the city manager just provided you becomes the budget. That doesn't exist at the state level, and so, if it would come to that, it doesn't seem like that's something that's going to be rectified in a day or two. So, there could be some period of time in which state government would be shut down, and in which no funds would be forthcoming to the municipalities from the state.
Just a quick clarifying question. The sum total of the governor's budget, however, is at levels that we need it to be at, right? So, this is a cash flow issue when we talk about the use of the sun fund, as far as we know today.
So, today, the two, there's a number of things in there, of course, that affect the city budget. But as the manager's pointed out, the two big ones are general revenue sharing and general purpose aid to education. Now, those work in two different ways. The school aid, as Dr. Doris pointed out in her presentation, they've been notified of the amount. That is an appropriation. The legislature sets that amount of money aside, and they run this quite complex formula on it, and decide how much each school is going to get. That is in the budget that was, the majority budget that was passed and signed the other day. That's not how general revenue sharing works. So, general revenue sharing has a line in the budget that is an appropriation, or basically an authority, authorization to spend the money, but it informs you in no way about what you're actually going to get, because on a month-by-month basis, they apply the 5% for general revenue sharing against the revenue that came in and cut the checks. So, so, in general sense, from a policy perspective, yes. General revenue sharing, the budget contains the 5%. Of course, there is some risk, given the volatility in the economy, that when the Revenue Forecasting Committee provides their report in May, that it won't look like the one they provided in February, and it might be less. And then, of course, as the manager pointed out, if, if the referendum were to pass, all payments from the state would stop, including the school aid, general revenue sharing, you know, things that we get for homestead exemption, Betty and Better exemption, all kinds of things.
So, we'll continue monitoring that. We'll continue watching to see where we're at. Obviously, I encourage you to do the same. I know we're short for time. I think the only thing, especially for those who might be tuning in, they have not been part of the other workshops, just as a reminder. You know, the goal, the council goal for this budget was no new staff positions to be included to the tax levy, also maintain existing levels of programming. And so, that's what this budget does. We're not, we're not adding anything to that. However, keep in mind that the demand for city services is increasing at every level. If I had more time, I'd walk through each one of those department demands, but if you've got questions, or you want that in a future workshop, we can talk about each one of those. What's taking place, not just locally, state level, national level, has direct impacts on the way that we're able to provide our services. And so, each one of those departments have an increase in demand. What's the impact on that? That means that citizens that are looking for services within those departments, they're delayed. Each one of those departments will be delayed in providing those services. Already mentioned the changes since the last presentation. The last piece is, if you take a look at the tax levy increase, if you were to back out what I would call the fixed, the fixed number. The fixed number is your debt service, and the fixed number is the county tax. It's not a thing we can do about either one of those. That's been set in stone, and that's done. So, if you were to back that out and take a look at what is, what's the driver in this budget? What's the amount? Then you're at $1,207,000. That's the increase, where if you were to back out all the other components out of the tax levy, that means that's a 1.37% increase on the, on the tax levy that...
On the municipal?
Municipal and intergovernmental.
Right.
If you were to back out the county tax increase and back out the debt service, 1.37%. So, as you can see, this is a very lean budget that's being presented, but it's meeting that your, your goal that you provided as hold the line, no new staff, and no new programming.
Council Mills? Here, I'll say it. Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that said, I know that we've, Public Works has opening, I don't know if it's been, they've been filled yet, for four various positions. I don't know how long they've been vacant. Given that, how have we been making it so long without these positions being filled? And if we've gotten along without having these people in the position, could we not fill them in the next budget?
So, so, those are very good questions, Council Gary. We're growing short on time, and the manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're going to have a staffing report for the budget workshop Thursday night about what the vacant positions are, and the length of time they've been vacant. And I know there's been lots of activity in the last 10 days going on with the manager, the assistant city manager, and the department heads, and they will be coming in with feedback based on our last discussions, including those very points, which I think will take more time to go through than we have tonight, but we'll cover those Thursday night.
I mean, I didn't think we'd get the answer tonight, but I wanted to put that out there.
Yeah.
And if there's a way to save money, and have the department still run, then before we hire these people and then say, whoops, sorry, I don't want to get to that point.
Right, correct. That's fine. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, the council workshop will be concluded, and we'll reconvene at 7:00 PM for the regular city council meeting. and we'll reconvene at 7:00 PM for the regular city council meeting.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, crawl.
Thank you very much. If we could have the counselors introduce themselves. We'll, we'll start tonight on this end with Counsel Platt.
Good evening. Adam Platt, City Councilor at Large.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, Counselor Ward Five.
Ben Weisner, City Counselor Ward Four.
Good evening. Jeff Hyman, Mayor.
Good evening. Steve Milks, City Council Ward Three.
Good evening. Tim Cowan, City Counselor Ward Two.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, City Counselor Ward One.
Belinda Gary, City Counselor at Large.
Anaya Aggie, Student Representative.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda tonight is the consent items. There's three items. Appointing Cliff Grime to the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Corporation, appointing Jonathan Labonte to the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Corporation, and appointing Jonathan Labonte to vote the shares held by Auburn shareholders for the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Corporation. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counsel Walker. Is there a second?
Seconded by Counselor Milks.
Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is approval of minutes from the March 17th, 2025 regular city council meeting. Are there errors or corrections? Not seeing any, is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
It's moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counselor Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? So there will be six in favor, none opposed, and one abstention. Counsel Weisner was not at the prior meeting. Do you have that, Madam Clerk? Two, two abstentions for absence at the prior meeting. Thank you. We'll move on to communications, presentations and recognitions. So the next item is the Spirit of America Award. And if I could have Silver Moore Lehman come up front, we'll, we'll do on it.
So we're very pleased tonight for the City of Auburn to recognize Silk Lehman for the Spirit of America Tribute Award for 2024. Silver is a longtime resident of Auburn. She's been very active in promoting recycling. She's been on the several evolutions of the Auburn City Recycling Committee and has been instrumental in helping that committee and providing advice to the city on how to proceed with our solid waste and recycling plans. So on behalf of the grateful community, thank you for all you do for the people of Auburn. And I'd like to present you this plaque. Thank you very much.
Since I have a plaque about recycling, I devoutly hope that that means that Auburn will continue and up its dedication to increasing our recycling and making it more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the next item, which is a Safe Streets for All update by Mr. Cousins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Jason Reddy from VHB is here to give you an overview of the Safe Streets for All project that we've been working on. We'll get the screen zoomed to the right extent here. This has been a joint project between the cities of Lewiston and Auburn funded by ATRC, where each city ends up with an action plan. Jason will explain a little bit more about this program and what the plan does for it.
Graham, here, let me move this a little bit. Again, thank you. My name's Jason Reddy. I'm a traffic engineer and traffic lead for VHB and project manager for this. And so thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. As Eric mentioned, this is the Safe Streets and for all, Safe Streets for All Safety Action Plan. This is PDFs. Let me just kind of scroll down here. Just to provide an introduction, you know, what is the SS4RA? It's a national, you know, through FHWA program. Who can apply? MPOs, tribes, counties. As Eric mentioned, it came through ETRC. So why would you want to apply for this grant? It would be to allow yourself to use it for future grant and other funding opportunities. I mean, besides just the ability to have the safety action plan itself and the recommendations that we would have. So one of the reasons that you, Lewiston and Auburn, now, and I'll just kind of emphasize that for a second. It was a joint project, but each, both Lewiston and Auburn both have their own individual safety action plans. So to start this off, one of the reasons that Auburn became eligible is because of, under the grant program, there's, what was created was a disadvantaged census tract. And it used a number of factors related to, you know, access to healthcare. And it was all based off from census information. But it designated the, you know, as a priority overall nationally over all the census tracts. And among these certain Lewiston, but Auburn census tracts were designated as disadvantaged. So with that, we were, ATRC was able to apply for that. So with that grant funding, the, I'm stuttering a little bit here. What we're going to be producing for deliverable here is the safety action plan. So what are the components of the action plan? The first one, what I just went over through the disadvantaged census tracts is the equity considerations. This was something that was a part of that initial characteristics of what it must be put into it. And I would just only mention and emphasize that now is that due to the current change in the federal administration, some of those components are gone. Or rather, for continue of the program, the equity is gone. But my understanding is that that's been replaced with systematic poverty census tracts, which is more of a decades-long look back into persistently poverty. So, but also to emphasize that the recommendations themselves and the content of the safety action plan weren't, you know, didn't, the equity was just more of a notification or an asterix just to emphasize certain areas, but didn't change the, the content or the recommendations. The other components of the action plan just include that, you know, we have a strategy and process where we have a prioritization of some of the recommendations that we have, noting progress and transparency. In this case, you know, we're in public meetings. There's, you know, nothing behind closed doors and all of the information that we have is public. Another part is just that it's not just capital improvements and recommendations, but there's also policy types of recommendations that can be made and, you know, just wide-ranging content. So the other part here is, you know, just what is this process? I just kind of circled the leadership commitment. And this is all coming from FHWA, some of the requirements and what they're asking you to do. So the leadership commitment is, you know, what we're asking you guys to do now, which is to consider, review and hopefully ultimately endorse the recommendations. I'll even add additionally that City of Auburn has already had a Vision Zero resolve, in which case, you know, you're looking to say it's not just we want to reduce crashes. We want to stop having so many fatalities. Let's see what, you know, the, the, the goal is to have zero, you know, you know. So the other, you know, components is that there was a safety analysis. We used 10 years' worth of main DOT crash data to make sure we had a wide-ranging, rigorous, I guess we'll say. And I'll even just add to that, that the, as we'll get to later in the presentation, the emphasis isn't on, you know, just every little fender bender that comes along, but more on the, specifically the injury-producing crashes or fatal-producing crashes. This is a planning process and the engagement and collaboration. I'll also note that we use the LA Bike Ped Committee as a steering committee and, you know, incorporated, you know, specifically their, their comments to help guide us through this process. As I mentioned, it's a data collection element. One of the ways that we wanted to make sure that this work would apply over not just a, what may ultimately be a short-lived federal program, but we made sure that it lined up under main DOT's existing strategic highway safety plan. And this, that there's certain emphasis areas, as shown on the screen here. This is what main DOT's latest, 2022, one. The reason I just emphasized this is that there's certain ones we just want to look at more. And it's not necessarily the most crashes or always the, the worst ones, I guess we'll say. But there's other ones that thankfully don't have a lot of, it, it doesn't happen a lot, but when they do, you know, generally they are injury-producing. In this case, it would be the bicycles and pedestrians, what we're calling the vulnerable users. That, you know, for most motor vehicle crashes, you don't have a couple of tons of steel around you to protect you. Some of the other ones are just highlighted or priorities of main DOT. But we wanted to make sure that we emphasize in the same way so that this would be applicable to other areas. I mean, just as an example, that for any of these safety projects outside of the program, you could just go to main DOT and just have both a, you know, data-driven plan. It's gone through a public process and has your local endorsement. That's a lot easier plan and, you know, ability for main DOT to partner with you on, on a future project or program, if it's not even capital. So as I mentioned, this is the part of the data collection process. It was 10 years' worth of data. It's lined up under those focused areas here. A couple of things I just want to highlight, you know, I'm, this 6,309 out of a total 8,472 crashes in the last 10 years, but that's 75% of them that, you know, were not injury-producing. So as we came through our recommendations and the analysis, we, in a way, ignored some of those, for the most part, those, so that we could concentrate our recommendations on the areas that, the locations in the city that have injury-producing crashes. Other ones is, you know, just briefly, the number of incidences of young drivers based off from the demographic that we had and additionally just winter crashes, which, you know, may differentiate you between other places in the nation, well, based on our winter climate. So the other part is that there was a survey, a, a public survey. In this case, among other demographic and more general safety questions, we also asked the respondents to, you know, place a dot on a map and, you know, show their, you know, specific concern at a specific location. And you can see the responses we have, some emphasizing from the perspective of driver or pedestrian. And what I'll do is the next slide is just kind of a zoomed-in version of that. And here, I'll just, taking a look at some of the differences, we'll say, between what drivers see and pedestrians see. In this case, you can see that, you know, drivers don't really have much complaint, you know, in the areas just south of Center Street, north of Court Street, whereas there's a lot of concerns among pedestrians that go there. Again, for, let's say, Court Street between Union and Lewiston, you can see that, well, i- it covers both of them, that everybody is sensing that there's problems here for both drivers and pedestrians alike. And then, I guess, much in the same ways north. Let me take a look at Main Street between, I think it's Mill Street and Court Street. You can see just, you know, drivers don't seem to be seeing issues of them, but a number of pedestrians have voiced their concerns in that particular area. Other parts of the survey that we would just, I would just highlight here is that, you know, there's certain perceived safety differences, but, you know, most people consider driving themselves or using a carpool substantially safer than what people would perceive as safety on using a wheelchair, mobility device. And even just what I highlighted here is the significant safety difference among people that kind of self-identify as living in a rural area as opposed to an urban area. You know, the rural people, respondents noted that, you know, their perceived safety was much less for both transit and among motorcycles. And I, I'll just, it shows a consistent response that urban roads are perceived to be safer than rural roads. And I think that's just taking a look at the yellow versus blue. So moving on more to the crash analysis. So using a GIES location based of that 10 years' worth of crash data, specifically looking at the injury or fatal-producing crashes, we created what was called a high injury network. In this case, we're taking specific, I guess we'll call them chunks of road, not necessarily to, you know, from this location to here on a, in a systematic way, but able to break this up. And then we prioritize the, you know, the, the most air, the, the, the stretch of road most prone to injuries, crashes, to, to least. And even, you know, just among those, it's not like the least is the, the least of it. It's just among the top ranks and we used a top 25 list to just take a look. You can see that for the most part, we have, you know, Route 4, Minut Avenue, and down to Exit 75. And for the most part, most of the downtown major roads were ranked in that, up, up top among fatal and serious injury. You know, and you can just maybe just kind of reflect on that, you know, does, does that make sense to you? Was that surprising, you know, based off from, you know, your experiences and what, what you're able to see? Just to go down, we now have just a listing of these roads. And you can see for the, just as a, to take a look at the top five lists, we have Court, Center, Twice, Main Street and Court Street again. And just to briefly go back, we can kind of pick up some of these ones. You know, it's Route 1, you know, right in front of Auburn City Hall here. And then taking Route 4 to the north, you can see we have, you know, 6, 2, 3 and 8. Number five is, you know, Court Street west of Minut Avenue. And number four is Main Street here going down into New Auburn. With a summary of the, the crashes that were experienced in there for that 10-year period. So finally, after doing the data analysis, taking that public survey, and I'll just even just briefly mention again, is those specific locations that respondents had in that survey, I mean, we took that in some cases directly to our recommendations. You know, if there was a comment that, you know, I don't like this particular crosswalk just because at night it's very dark and I feel like nobody can see me. That was a specific recommendation that made its way to the action plan recommendations of, well, let's, let's add some more lights here. Let's, let's light this area up so that you're more able to be seen. This is just a section, you can see it's just page one of three. We won't go through three, but just as an example of some of the things that we'll see. We'll have, you know, the strategy, you know, just kind of discussing. In this case, it's sidewalk ramps, other places it's enforced speed limits. So in that case, it's a enforcement, it's not on the, it's not a capital side, it's other areas. We can see that what area- We can see that what area it's addressing, who could, you know, take part in this, who could be a partner, you know, we've identified where funds may come from, where the priority locations, we have our top 25 list, and we can see that, you know, these are the areas, so on, the timeframe. The last one I'll just kind of linger on for a second is the crash modification factor. This is coming from FHWA, and their experience, their research, their statistics, they show that when you do this type of treatment on an area, this is the expected reduction in crashes, or specifically for that crash pattern of what you should be able to see. So not all of them have that, others are just, you know, general safety ideas and are not necessarily within the FHWA crash modification factor clearinghouse, we'll call it. Also kind of go over, as part of the safety action plan and the extensive appendices that we have, we go through each of the top 25 list and provide the specific recommendations and location-based of where each of them are. Some of what we'll see as, just as example of the Court Street, right out in front here, is just an enforcement of speed limits, a lot of speed-related injury-producing crashes, better signage, the reflective backplates, you know, just as an example, I'm sure anyone that drives Court Street in the AM or PM during certain times of year, you know, it's just that east-west, when you're driving, so when you're trying to also look up at the signals, it's a lot harder to see them, which can sometimes not help people obeying or that perception there. So these retro-reflective backplates both widen out the signal head and also it's that yellow outline, which makes it much easier to see in low light or rainy, foggy conditions as the light hits it. And so that is something that has been found to help emphasize the intersection. Other additions show just certain pedestrian enhancements, the LPIs is the lead pedestrian interval, where the controller, signal controller almost kind of gives the pedestrian a head start by making everything else red, but to at least get the pedestrian out into the road ahead of when the green lights go, or not in a conflicting way, but just to allow a pedestrian out there to be seen, which enhances compliance, we'll say, for people seeing them once they're already there. As I mentioned before, there was also policy recommendations, this wasn't strictly just for capital improvements. So to go over these briefly, Complete Streets Guide, this was an ATRC document from a while ago, and, you know, our recommendations to revisit and kind of reaffirm the recommendations that were in there in some of the guides. Obviously, things change over time, and so it makes sense to take a look at that for implementation for, in the City of Auburn. Another is just the design and construction standards, you know, being consistent throughout the city, how do we want to treat the, or do the sidewalk materials? Daylight crosswalks, in this case, that's more of an understanding that we need to have room at crosswalks, and so when you have your parking right up to it, it's harder for people to see the pedestrian that kind of steps out there. So an impact parking, but that parking is at the, I guess, the cost of pedestrian safety for those stepping out there. Policies and practices is part of this, and the other one is just the development review process. One thing that we noted is that, see, there's a perception that some wave, standards are waived through the development process, so we would always want to ensure that, as an example, the ability for pedestrians to use the businesses so that not everything is driven, that must be used by a vehicle. So that would mean both the crosswalk frontage as it attaches and also the ability for someone to safely go from that crosswalk to the development entrance. Getting to the end here, so we have the action tables for future projects, so it can just even be used as a reference for any city projects that come through, this can be used as reference for things that should be incorporated. Wanted to emphasize the public process that this has gone through, through the public survey, through the steering committees, and the specific focus groups and other groups to, including, say, the public safety. We recently had a meeting among their other reviews of the document to make sure that we have their feedback and input for recommendations. Oops, I don't need to scroll. I'll even just the emphasis that, you know, the appendix is comprehensive and, you know, the references and for each of the 25 different areas. And as I mentioned at the beginning, that we hope that this document would allow the City of Auburn to pursue grants and use it as a basis for such that, beyond just the safety recommendations of themselves, to hopefully drive toward a Vision Zero of serious injury and fatal crashes. Just to get to the last slide here, you know, just, you know, again, thank you for your time, but also just to linger on, throughout the safety document, we did want to, you know, drive a people-centered focus, and so throughout there we have these community safety stories, which is coming directly from either, you know, the interview on the street or the comments left through the survey itself, in order to, you know, bring about what people are seeing out there. In this case, it's, again, just an emphasis that the desire to use the pedestrian, but maybe not the perceived ability or the safety there. I guess with that, that's the end of my presentation, so I'd be happy to field any questions or discuss anything about the safety study, safety action plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reddy. Is there questions or comments from the council?
I just had, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just had a question. I don't know, thank you for the presentation, I appreciate that. I'm not sure if this question is for you or for Eric or for City Manager. I'm curious what happens with this information now? How do we take this? And is, are some of these recommendations woven into operating budget, CIP, grant? How does that all play out and what role does the council play in sizing these up from both a priority perspective for equity but also for cost?
I can take that. I think one of the things we will do is make sure that the comprehensive plan consultant has it, so it can be considered in recommendations in the various areas of the city. We can look at it for policy changes, as far as ordinance changes, certainly work with the Complete Streets Committee. I think a big part of it is if the council is willing, and we'll ask you to do that in May, I think on the 5th, to adopt this, to recognize that it's been through the public process, that we have a lot of feedback from the public on these issues. Not necessarily to fund every single one of them, but to have that document that lays out improvements that can be incorporated into local or state or federal highway plans as we address certain sections of the street, and then also to apply for grants or funding sources to make improvements that are specific to what's recommended here. And to readopt the Vision Zero that the city adopted a number of years ago, I think it's been about 10 years now, to recognize the goal of trying to get to zero fatalities on our roadways. We can use this document to support future applications and also to measure against future capital improvement plans. But most of these roads are state and federal highways where we're trying to pull state and federal resources for those improvements and only, and fund the match generally locally.
Council, no?
And, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you're saying this document is going to help us in consideration for state fund, for state funding and federal funding, perhaps? It'll be?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, not necessarily directly, but I, my understanding and experience with Main DOT is, I mean, that's what they're looking for when they receive requests from municipalities, is, you know, again, that is it data-driven, it's not just a good idea from somebody. Has the public been involved, or is this, again, just, well, you know, we thought it was a good idea? I think just with having that all together, along with, you know, the council endorsement that signals to Main DOT that, you know, as a process and as a package, that it's something that they can easily partner with the city on.
And so as we look at the sort of re-envisioning our roads in the city and how things are going to go, this is another tool that we have, is that?
Absolutely, yeah. Did identify problems or concerns from the public survey. DOT was also part of the work at ATRC, so they became aware of these concerns, and the staff there has already seen a lot of those.
Other questions or comments from the council? Not seeing any, thank you very much, we appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
So the next item is a 2024 summary from the PACE unit, and Chief Mo and Sergeant Gagnon are here to present.
Eric, you can leave that right back there, there's his next.
They're using the PDF as well.
With me is Sergeant Nicholas Gagnon, supervisor of our PACE unit. And so in February marked the first year of operation of our proactive community enforcement unit, and what we want to do is give you an update on this new unit and what they've been able to accomplish in that first year of operation. In the update that I provided to you, they were very active this year with Sergeant Gagnon and Officer George Monteith assigned to the unit. They affected 153, you know, physical arrests or citations for a total of 223 criminal charges throughout the year. That encompassed drug enforcement, traffic enforcement, neighborhood issues that we've been dealing with. And the basis for PACE was to kind of provide a surgical approach to neighborhood problems, and being able to get into the neighborhoods and work on specific houses and that are causing issues throughout that neighborhood. And as you can see, they've been very successful in mitigating a lot of our drug problems and neighborhood issues in that first year. And overall, we've had 25 illegal firearms that were seized as a result of these investigations through conducting seven search warrants. And also part of PACE's mission is selective traffic enforcement in some of the problem areas within the city. And over the course of that first year, they conducted 308 traffic stops as well. So overall, it's been very effective, very pleased with the results of that first year, and looking forward to another year of operation with Sergeant Gagnon and Officer Monteith. And field any questions that you might have regarding the unit?
Any questions or comments from the council? Council, Walker.
Thank you. Thank you. We, in New Auburn especially, have appreciated having, you know, your new group, I always call it the new group, but having them out there and specifically, they're working on the two goals that we were really having problems with in the New Auburn area. So we thank you, and we know you've done a good job because we've seen it all around the area.
Thank you, council.
Other questions, comments? Council, Collins?
Just impressive results, and thanks for, great, great first year, looking forward to see what you guys continue to do, because I know a lot of it has to do with relationships. So I'm imagining these things will improve over time, so, great work.
Thank you, council.
Council, Platts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question about data. Obviously, this is year one, so we have one data set for 12 months or so. At what point, and will it be appropriate, to compare our success or our results to other communities? Are you looking at what other communities are affecting, you know, are affecting with similar, you know, representation and budgets into this program, or is it apples and oranges? Is it even worth looking at?
It's hard to establish because municipalities work very differently. You know, the larger cities such as Portland, Bangor, they have specialized units that work specifically in this type of area where other municipalities rely on main drug enforcement to do that drug enforcement investigation for them. So it's, it'd be hard to try to compare those, we can do it with some of the larger municipalities, however, with those larger municipalities, they have more staff assigned to those type of tasks, so it'd be difficult to try to make those different comparisons.
That makes sense. Well, I look forward to comparing our data over time, as we have multiple years of data to compare.
Council, Mills?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for this information. Going forward, do you see this as a, I mean, to me, it seems like it's a very good program. I don't know anything about policing, so, you know, is this something that you see that we can grow? It seems like it's kind of old-school and that it's back to getting to know your community and really taking care of your neighborhoods, which is what the people of Auburn want. So is that something that we're gonna, you're gonna look to grow?
Absolutely. As we, as we work on our staffing levels, as we eliminate our vacancies and hire people and get them through the academy, we'll then be able to move other offices into the PACE unit as well. At full complement, the unit is assigned to have a sergeant and three officers assigned to it. Right now, there's a sergeant and one, and as we're able to fill vacancies, we'll be able to move officers into those vacant slots, to even expand our efforts even more and focus more on traffic enforcement as well.
You're happy with it?
I'm very happy with the results in the first year. It's very impressive, they've done a great job, and it's been outstanding work, and they always involve patrol as much as they can in those operations, so we're getting some of our frontline officers that have some experience in those operations as well. So very pleased with the first year.
Great, thank you, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council? No, look, a couple of comments. Really great work, this is, this is difficult work, it takes a lot of time to put these together. I think it's really impressive, the interaction with the community. Every time I see a report of action by the PACE unit on these problem drug locations, I always think it's a component of interaction with the community, listen to the community complaints of the locations and getting information from the community, so very much appreciated, and I hear around the community, folks are very pleased with the outcome of the work. So keep up the good work, good job.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. I think that, you know, one of the successes of programs like this is having the right people in the right seat, right? And so Sergeant Gagnon certainly is that right person, and so Nick, can you just share a little bit about, you know, I think Council Mills hit on it, and it's about developing those relationships in the community, but can you also share a little bit, what does that day look like? And I know it varies every day, I know it's going to be different, but when you and your officer go out, what's that goal, what does that look like? Just so they can have an idea.
It's on.
Thanks. Day-to-day, it can be completely different, depends on what kind of information or what kind of concerns we get from the citizens. We could take a bit of information, we may come in on a Tuesday morning and have some information, whether it's in an email or whatnot, that we may be able to act on that day, so we go away from what we may have planned to jump onto something, something that may be new from a concerned citizen. Once we get those concerns, we just try to build our cases, whether it's sitting on a location where we're getting complaints from for a few hours, to see if those complaints can be corroborated, and an investigation can be furthered from that. If there's nothing really going on, then we'll divert to doing traffic enforcement in some of the areas where we're also getting those concerns from citizens. So it shifts daily and sometimes throughout the day as well.
Thanks, Nick.
Council, Walker.
Thank you. One thing with the Neighborhood Watch meetings that we have in New Auburn, we've had Lieutenant Harrington invite these people to come and speak about things that they've done, and every, every time we have a bigger crowd when we say the PACE, people are coming to speak about what they're doing in the New Auburn area for, for, you know, crime or whatever it might be, why they're there. But I think these two gentlemen that are working this most of the time have been seen in our area quite a few times in the last year, and they have made a big difference. And the people, really, they enjoy hearing, you know, what they can tell them, they can't tell them everything because a lot of stuff is under investigation, but, but they enjoy knowing that they're there, and it makes people feel a lot better that they think someone's going up and down the road at some point of the day, whether it's evening, you know, morning or whatever, but it makes them feel a whole lot better in the New Auburn area. And I'm sure if the other areas had Neighborhood Watch meetings going on, they would probably invite you there too.
And one of the effectiveness of this unit is the agility that they have, where they can come in and, you know, they start the day with a certain plan, but are able to spend on a moment's notice if they get good intelligence that comes in. So being agile is, you know, a large part of the design of this unit, and it's been very effective so far.
Council, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for this presentation as well as the officers in general. I've been hearing a lot of good feedback, positive stuff from Auburn residents, that Auburn police officers offer compassion and patience with people that come up to them on the street, and it doesn't matter if you're a person in a suit and tie, or somebody on the street. And it doesn't matter if you're a person in a suit and tie or somebody running around in sweatpants. You guys stop and give them the time. And if they have questions or concerns, you guys listen. You may take notes. And they're not just blown off and led to think that, oh, he doesn't care about what I have to say. So, kudos to you guys. And I'm glad for this department and for all the good stuff because it's making Auburn the way Auburn used to be. And I want to thank you, gentlemen and the ladies as well, kindly.
Thank you, Council. It's good to note that on the first day of employment with the Auburn Police Department, the first thing that, that officer learns is our core values, honor, excellence, loyalty and professionalism. And it's drilled into them that they make every decision while they're at work based on those core values. And they take those core values to heart and they live by them every day. And I couldn't be more proud of the work that our staff is doing.
Other questions or comments from the council? Not seeing anything. Thank you very much, Chief Sergeant. Appreciate the presentation this evening.
Thank you.
The next item will be the first open session of the evening. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council about city matters that are not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Hello, my name is Tara Russo and I live on 90 Whitney Street in Auburn. Because of the beautiful weather recently, I decided to take a wonderful walk with my family down by the River Walk, like most people probably would around this time of year. And I have become sorely disappointed by what I saw. One by one. I would continue to walk from the top of the hill right near where the falls are and walk all the way to Bonnie Park. And I did not see a single foot of that boardwalk that was not covered in garbage. I am hurt and I am ashamed. And more than anything, I feel scared. I feel scared because that is the water walk that I would walk on as a child. And now I see hazards and only hazards instead of my childhood memories that I cherish. It is disappointing, to say the least, especially when after such cold and long winters, I feel like we can do better. These are pictures of the continuing park, Bonnie Park. More garbage, as we can see, especially with the reputation that these places have. What I notice most is that there are no trashcans with large swaths of area without proper places to dispose of garbage or recyclables, so you can't separate them. And there are no Sharps, no Sharps bins. And there are no dog waste bins in those areas. You can go from the Hilton Water Walk Hotel and walk all the way to Gritty's Restaurant, which is just under a mile, without seeing a single trashcan. And again, that entire water walk does not contain any Sharps containers. Because of this, I would continue to walk to Chestnut Park in Auburn, very close to my home, and I very much appreciate it until now. Because as I go to Chestnut Park, I also notice garbage. Not only do I notice garbage, you will see in these photos, broken glass on the basketball courts, a deceased bird's wing also on the basketball courts, fiberglass insulation, needles, plastic, and a flood of garbage coming down from the surrounding dirt walls that surround the park, both from the PAL Center that is currently in construction and the previously destroyed apartments from previous construction and the current live-in apartments in the surrounding area. It is, I don't want to say eye-opening. Eye-opening fills me with wonder, but this is, I'm sorry, just so much more. I'm, I'm very young. I don't know if you can tell how young I am, but I don't have children. And the whole reason I went is to take my nephew to where I wanted to go. And how am I supposed to want children? There are needles everywhere. There is garbage everywhere. Again, dangerous construction materials everywhere. And combined with the previous discussions of tonight with public safety laws, the rising cost in rent, how am I supposed to want to raise a child when this is what my streets look like? I would like to show you for comparison, actually, some areas shot in Lewiston, including Kennedy Park, which I don't think is a secret, might not have the brightest reputation and has been included in the news multiple times. But unlike Chestnut Park, Kennedy Park actually has trashcans. There's not a single trashcan in Chestnut Park. There's two in Bonnie. And there is about two on the River Walk. And unfortunately, I just don't think it's enough. There is also no Sharps waste basket in Chestnut Park. There is a singular doggy waste disposal in Chestnut Park. And unfortunately, I don't think it's being used. For instance, when I went to Chestnut Park, I actually decided to clean up some of the garbage. That's why I went. I ended up picking up 55 gallons worth of garbage, which for reference, because I don't think people here are buying 55 gallon garbage bags, and I only had an hour to clean over the weekend, is about this height to my body. They are industrial-sized garbage bags. And I did it with a partner. And just an hour. I just, I, I don't know. I, people work full-time. Some people can't clean. I can't look at those children and expect them, yeah, you should clean the court. Pick up that broken glass. Pick up those needles. And I feel hopeless sometimes, just looking at it. Even though I did something myself, I still feel this hopelessness. And I don't know what we're supposed to do, other than follow Lewiston's example. Kennedy Park looked so spotless on the same exact day I went to Chestnut Park. It was eye-opening. And at the same time, just last month, over 3,600 pounds of garbage was picked up at the end of March by Lewiston Public Works. They spent a whole day doing it. It was a very beautiful action and I noticed the difference. And I wish I could see that difference in my own local parks, but unfortunately, I don't. I do have a following example picture here. You do not have to if you don't want to, but there is a needle in this picture. And if you care to spot it, feel free. It is covered around other garbage and debris. And while you may spot the needle, I want you to ask, can you trust your child to spot that needle in your local park in the same amount of time that you can? And can you trust them to not touch it? At the same time that I went to Chestnut Park, there's two children there. They sighted feces out in the open on the sidewalk, and they could not discern if it was human or dog. And regardless, there was a dog disposal just 20 feet away. One quoted saying it was disgusting and another quoted saying it was sad. I had to pull those children aside and tell them, there's a needle in this area and I don't want you touching it. Treat that needle as if it was a loaded gun because you don't know. And I asked them to point it to me. I wanted to see if they knew what they were looking at. And the child, just a little older than the other one, approximately age 10, could, but his little sister couldn't, even after he noticed and even after he pointed at it. And I had to point to her the bright orange end tip that was just barely covering the sharp needle and teach her that you can't touch that. Unfortunately, this park was also covered in other types of plastics that were also brightly colored, pieces of plastic that were from broken children's toys, bikes and surrounding debris from the various apartments. And even though that little girl was about eight, I asked her, do you think a child even younger than you could tell the difference between these broken toys and that needle if you couldn't? And she said, no. I just want something to be done. I don't know what to be done. And frankly, more than anything, I am upset and scared. And I thank you so much for your time. And I thank you so much for hearing me out. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, providing your feedback. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to address the council? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
My name is Andres Morales. I live at 197 Summer Street. And we have a problem over there with gang activity. And I've been trying to get patrols to come. And it doesn't seem like I'm being listened to. Also, there's drone activity also. You know, there's neighbors, people that live right on the block that are, you know, peeking, peeking into people's houses. And this is going on all night. And I've been trying to, you know, get some help. And it doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to happen. I met with the police a couple of times, you know, downstairs. And I can't get any help from them. I don't know what's going on. I know they're doing a good job, you know, with drugs and all this other kind of stuff, but this has to be addressed. There's, there's problems with gangs. Nobody seems to be concerned about it. But that's all I want to say. We need, you know, we need somebody to look, look into it.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate you coming tonight, providing feedback to the council.
Thank you.
Is there any other members of the public who'd like to address the council? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any. The open, first open session will be closed. The next item is...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Can, can I just remark quickly on those two that Mr. Manager's gonna take in notes? And I'm sure he's gonna address both issues. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't want that to go unmentioned.
Thank you. The, the next item is under new business order 3304072025, authorizing the donation of an Auburn police vehicle valued at approximately $6,000 to the law enforcement program at the Lewiston Regional Technical Center. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Platts, seconded by Counselor Walker. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any. Prior to going to the council, Chief, would you like to comment on this?
Certainly. This is Steve Reese. He's the coordinator for the law enforcement program at the, at the high school. And by allowing us to do this, what this does is it allows us to enhance our recruitment efforts. Because we've, we've targeted that. We need to start recruiting at a young age. And we've always been very active with the law enforcement program at the technical center. We have a couple of officers that are graduates of that program. So, I think that allowing us to donate this cruiser will allow them to be able to expand their, their skills and knowledge as they get ready to graduate and pursue a career in criminal justice. And by allowing us to do this, in this current budget in CIP, the three Cruisers we replaced, we were able to buy three leftover 2023 models at a reduced price. That allowed us to have the ability to donate this car versus having to trade it as to offset the price of the Cruisers. Unfortunately, in the FY25, we've already been told that leftovers aren't available. But we were able to do, achieve this in this budget by purchasing the leftover 23s. So, that allows us to do this without any extra cost in the CIP budget.
Discussion by the council? Counsel Walker?
Thank you, Chief. Sound like a great job, and I think they'll use it real wisely.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great idea. But how did you choose this vehicle? And is this one, I mean, is this one of the older vehicles?
Yes. It's one of our, it's the oldest marked unit that was left on the fleet. That it was scheduled to be traded out anyway. And we're actually be able to, we actually save money by not having to strip it out completely. We will leave the prisoner cage and the lights on it because that's a Ford Explorer. And transitioning to the Tahoe's, we have to out for the Tahoe brand new because we're unable to use the equipment from the Ford Explorer to the Tahoe. So, they're getting a marked unit with a prisoner cage and lights and active lights and sirens to be able to use for the scenario. So, this vehicle is already slated to be traded out. So, instead of trading it, we're able to give it to the school.
As I said, it's a great idea, but I just wanted to make sure. I saw where it was a 2019 we were trading, I mean, donating.
Other questions or comments? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted.
Thank you.
The next item is order 3404072025, approving the annual reports to the Maine State Housing Authority for the tax year of April 1, 2024 to March 31 of 2025, and authorizing the city manager to sign the annual reports for Affordable Housing Tax Increment Financing Districts Number 16, Webster School, Number 21, 477 Minut Avenue, and Number 22, 48 Hampshire Street, as provided by the Business and Community Development Staff. Is there a motion?
Moved to adopt as presented.
Second.
Who was the second? So, it was moved by Counselor Whiting and approved, seconded by Counselor Walker. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on this? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any discussion by the council? Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in other words, these apartments are what they call attainable rents and not full, all of them all market rate?
Mr. Holmes?
All of these buildings have state tax improvement financing districts, which requires them to have certain rents which would be attainable, yes?
Thank you.
Other questions or comments by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. We'll move on to reports. A couple of quick items. The Comprehensive Plan Committee met a week or so ago. They are starting to actually get into the data analysis work with the staff and the consultant. The next meeting is on the 24th of this month at 6:00 PM across the hall in the community room. And for folks that would like to have more information, if you go to the city website, prominently displayed is a link for the Comprehensive Plan. And that'll take you to two sites. It'll take you to a committee page that has the agendas, minutes, information from the committee. And it'll also take you to a project page that's hosted by the consultant that has the ability for people to interact with the consultants and to provide feedback as we go through the Comp Plan Committee process. We'll have more on this presentation at our next meeting, but I wanted to recognize quite a few members of staff went to the Maine Chief, Fire Chief's annual meeting when Chief Chase was named as the Fire Chief of the Year. There's a very large turnout from both staff here at City Hall and folks from the Fire Department. Chief Chase wasn't able to be here tonight, so we'll have a presentation on that next meeting. And I wanted to report back on the two public budget town hall meetings. I think they went quite well. Assistant City Manager was there. Several counselors came to the meetings, members of the school board and the superintendent, assistant superintendent. Lots of great questions. Both meetings overran the allotted time, but I think it was very productive. We got a lot of great questions asked by members of the community about the budget and how it works. And with that, Counsel Gary?
Hate to say nothing at this time.
Counsel Whiting.
The ice is almost out of Lake Auburn, and Tabor's opens April 10th.
Counsel Callen.
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Milks.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Counsel Weisner.
Nothing.
Counselor Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First one is Age Friendly Committee meeting. It will be April 8th, that's tomorrow, Tuesday, at 5:30 at the Senior Community Center, Pettingill Park. Second, Neighborhood Watch meeting, April 24th, Thursday, 6 o'clock, at the Sixth Street Congregational Church. And third will be the United New Auburn Association meeting at Rowley's Diner, April 29th, Tuesday night, 6 o'clock. And we will have a City of Auburn Director there to speak. Thank you.
Counsel Pla.
Thank you. Just two comments. The first is that the school committee wrapped up its kind of not budget deliberations, but the budget presentations at last week's meeting. So the school's finished that. If anybody, I just want to continue to make myself available. If any counselors have any specific questions about the school department, what we saw today, if there's any specific numbers, enrollment, class sizes, I have all that stuff. So just reach out to me if you have any questions. And then next on Thursday, I'm on the Schools Facilities Committee. We talked about that today. That's the committee that'll be looking at sixth grade up to Auburn Middle School. So that's something I can start reporting on as well. That meeting takes place on Thursday, specifically if there are any questions you guys have about that. Again, load me up before that meeting, and I'm happy to ask them for you guys.
Thank you. Representative Abdullahi.
So the tennis season started. I'm pretty sure our first game is going to be with Lewiston. I think it's on the 7th, 10th, so I'd watch out for that.
Great, thank you. Representative Eggy.
I also have a bit of a promo. The All-City Concert for Auburn, I'm just checking to make sure this is true, is on the 15th at EL. I believe it's at 7 o'clock, so you should all check that out. And then in May, maybe another meeting, I'll give an update. But in May, there's also a concert for the high schoolers, so yeah, you should go to those.
Great, thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think a lot of what the mayor covered, we seemed to have spent a lot of time together in the last week, and so a lot of them are those same items. Team's working very well on providing as much documentation necessary for the budget process. So we do have those three workshops coming up for the council. So we have April 10th, we have April 15th, and we have April 17th. We'll make sure that it gets on the websites. I believe they're already on the calendar, but we'll make sure we push that out so the public is aware of those upcoming meetings. I will get you an update on park, the status of our parks. As you all know, our team takes a great deal of pride in our parks. Some of it is timing, snow going out. Now finding what was left underneath that snow is a lot of times what we see, but we do have a construction site going on at Chestnut, which makes that very limited. But we also have two items that we are having conversations about, and that is the OUI Work Program from the Sheriff's Department because of some staffing issues. We normally have a great, unfortunately, a great ability to be able to do a lot of work with those that are providing community service, and we know that that's being impacted as well as the community service program at the high school, we know is also being eliminated, which was a great turnout for us. Many of the high school students, to get their community service credits, would come and do projects at the city. And so without those two, the team is actually having conversations now about what that looks like, just for staffing-wise for the council to know. A lot of our part-time staff that works on a lot of those initiatives, they do not begin till May. So we're still a few weeks away from that added staff coming in to do a lot of that work. But I'll provide some more updates for you in the future.
Mr. Manager, Sam Boss is also putting a group together for April 26, I believe. So anyone who wants to volunteer should try to reach out to Sam Boss.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second open session of the evening. If there's any member of the public who'd like to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. The second open session is closed. The council has four executive sessions tonight, none of which are expected to generate action by the council. So the first one is an executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 405, 6C for an economic development matter. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion second.
Moved by Counsel Weisner, I think seconded by Counselor Milks. All those in favor? The council will be in executive session.